S Ds to order, the date is November 1st, 2011, and it is 7:06 PM. I would ask the clerk to please call a roll.
President Klein.
Here.
Trustee O'Brien-Berklin.
Here.
Ortnor.
Here.
Stanford.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Wecken.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
Before you, you have the meeting minutes of October the 4th. Going to have a motion to accept the meeting minutes, at which time we can then discuss.
I'm going to approve, George.
Second. I'll get this from the Colleen. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the meeting minutes as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. It's at this time that we have an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of any topics or issues not in today's agenda, is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Before you have ordinance number 3-2011, an ordinance amending the municipal code for the village of North Hudson, and this relates to amending chapter 86 zoning. Do you have to address this? Or is someone else? Oh, Patrick. Patrick, okay.
I can give you a little background on the ordinance amendment. In the past, communities were able to charge fees in lieu of the requirement of land for parks and open space within the community. That was taken out of state statutes in, either in 2007 or right before 2007. And then years after that, that was reinstated. So, a lot of communities had taken it out of their ordinances to meet state statutes, and then some have put it back in now that you can have that, and others have just left it out for now. So, the discussion was, should we put this back into the village's statutes? And so, that's when we were contacted. And what we did was, through the process, we looked at what other communities were doing in relationship to this, as far as land requirements, lands they wouldn't accept for parkland, what kind of development would be charged, would require parkland dedication or fees in lieu of, so we looked at some of those things, and after a couple meetings of discussion, we kind of added and removed a few things from the previous version of your ordinance, and I'll just touch on those briefly. In the past, the village required parkland dedication from commercial zoning development. And most communities don't require land dedication from commercial development. So, we decided to remove that. There was some verbiage within the old ordinance that referred to a C1 zoning classification, which you no longer have, so we removed that. And of course, we removed any verbiage related to fees in lieu of land or land dedication for commercial industrial properties. So, basically, it's only with residential development.
Excuse me, Patrick, you said you removed, you're recommending removing C1 or CI?
Oh, CI, I'm sorry. I misspoke. We also added, just to clarify or provide a little more direction, we have the village board listed as the sole authority to determine the suitability of the land, and also whether a fee in lieu of land is required. We provided some wording on what would be not considered parkland, such as drainage ways, wetlands, areas reserved for streets. So, in some communities, in the past, any land that was not used for the development was considered parkland or met the parkland dedication. And then over time, communities have seen that some of that land really is not useful for anything, so we just updated the wording on that. Some information about street frontage for a park, we have a minimum of 33 feet. I believe there wasn't a minimum in your previous ordinance. And we've looked at 33 feet in other communities because of, a lot of subdivisions had little trails or little easements for future trails through them. They may have been 10, 15, 20 feet. Well, we've seen communities that have tried to build them later and have received opposition from the neighbors, because basically it's, follows their backyard lot line. And the intent was right, I think, a long time ago, since it wasn't built right away, and many years had passed, there was a lot of opposition to having it built. So, after some discussion, we felt that 33 feet allows a trail. Now, if you want a multi-use trail, it has to be 10 feet, so it allows a 10-foot trail, it allows adequate space on each side to maybe plant trees, create some sort of visual buffer. And so, as I mentioned, in the past, there was never a minimum, and now we have a minimum of 35 feet. We do mention that as the service area of a park increases, you may want to look at providing more street frontage. Again, we removed the fee from the ordinance and referred it to the fee schedule. Originally, the fee had been $25,000, and the land dedication was one acre per 25 dwelling units. So, if you did not want, if you had 25 dwelling units, did not want that one acre of parkland, you could require a fee of $25,000. That's basically $1,000 per dwelling unit. So, we compared that to other communities, and it was the highest of the communities that we compared with. The closest was Somerset, there's approximately $750 per dwelling unit, and their price was based on the cost of them developing two of their more recent parks. And they said, based on previous equipment grading costs, et cetera, it was approximately $750 per dwelling unit. Again, they probably haven't had a park developed for the last perhaps five years, four or five years. And so, originally, we were going to leave it as is and not change it, and then there was a motion made by a member to raise that to $35,000, and that was seconded and passed, so that's how that number came to be.
That number may be adjusted later on in this meeting.
Sure.
When we talk about the fee schedule, the Finance Committee's already discussed this, so we will have a recommendation later on.
Okay. Any other questions, I can certainly answer them.
I look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3-2011.
I'll approve, George, of ordinance 03-2011, amending chapter 86 subdivisions.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Darrell. PDD district down the bottom-left corner of the first page, Park. I'm assuming the P is Park, the DD, can you help me?
Plan Development District.
Plan Development.
Oh, Plan Development.
This is a ring district?
Yeah.
And within a PDD, I've usually seen those called PDU, it's Plan Development.
PUD.
Plan Development District. Within a PDD, you can have mixed uses, it's a way to have flexibility in your zoning. Instead of having only residential, or only commercial, or only industrial, you can have a developer come and propose a mixed-use development, and that would fall under the PDD district. So, that part that would be residential within the PDD would be subject to this.
As I went through this, I did find what I think are a couple of typos, a couple very minor things, if I'm sure the motion will pass. Can I then talk to Becky about?
Sure.
Fix the typos. Any board members have any questions, Patrick, before I call a motion? Down there on the north side, yeah? All right. Anything you want to say? All in favor of the motion for ordinance 3-2011, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda, concealed carry prohibited in village hall discussion, possible approval. We had some discussion on this in the Finance Committee, and I'm not so sure that we are in a position where we have any motion necessary, but I would ask the chief if he would like to come up to the podium and address the topic.
Mr. President, this is actually a bit different than what was discussed at the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, which will come on a little later, was related to a policy related to employees carrying a concealed weapon while on duty. This is with respect to restrictions for the village hall in all parts, other than the police department. Act 35 incorporates any portion of a building that is a police station, sheriff's office, state patrol station, et cetera, as being exempt from the right to carry a concealed weapon. And so, the information before you, as provided, I provided the village administrator and clerk with the excerpts from Wisconsin Act 2011, Wisconsin Act 35, with relation to conceal and carry, and the fact that currently, as of today, at midnight this morning, a person with a Wisconsin concealed and carry permit could carry within this building, other than the portion that is the police department, or with, I believe, 26-plus Puerto Rico and another outlying area, those 26 states that have those concealed and carry permits, and a holder that's not a Wisconsin resident that has an out-of-state concealed and carry license, or a Wisconsin permitted concealed and carry license, could enter this building and access any of those parts while carrying that concealed weapon. The question before you, and I'm not actually taking a stance, but more being an information provider, the question before you is whether or not this board wants the other parts of this particular municipal building to be, to be considered a restricted zone for concealed and carry, for lack of a better term. You could also, and I don't think that it's necessarily, I recall if it's on the agenda, the Village Public Works building, because it is owned by the village, might be another area where you want to consider. Basically, what would have to happen, if that is felt to be the board's position, that they do not want access to those people that are permitted concealed and carry persons, is that they would have to provide signage at all entrances to the building, so that people would be made aware of that restriction. And so, there's some information in the handout that I gave you, related to the size of the signage, and some information that would be required on that particular sign. I believe the village administrator did provide you with a proposed ordinance, if you were interested in going forward tonight on that prohibition, but as of this point, that's the information that I've been asked to provide to you.
On a recent visit to the city hall, I saw the sign that is used there to prohibit people from carrying a concealed weapon when court is in session, and you could not use it in the courtroom.
And I guess if I can piggyback on that.
Yeah.
That's part of the state statute.
Right.
Which, if there, when municipal court is held in this particular room, there would be a restriction against concealed carry.
And we would need a sign to that effect.
No.
We would not. We would not.
All right, we don't need it, but will all those people who carry a concealed weapon and have a permit for it know that they can't carry it into the courtroom? Or is it worthwhile to put up a sign reminding people that they can't carry a concealed weapon into a courtroom?
I guess I can't, I guess I won't answer that, other than to say that the statute does cover that, and this particular conversation relates to the building when it's not a municipal court in session.
Darrell?
I want us to be in compliance with Act 35, and those things are in fact spelled out in Act 35. We need not post a sign. And in my opinion, posting a sign is actually counterproductive to what we really ought to be doing. Posting a sign, I think unfortunately gives a false sense of security, that somehow we are in a safe area, when actually the contrary is true. If we post a sign, what it is really saying is, to the law-abiding, legally permitted responsible citizens, you are not welcomed to bring a concealed carry weapon on these premises. But for the scofflaw, or the criminal, that is ignoring any kind of law right now, and would continue to ignore the sign in the future, we essentially are saying to that person, you know what, you can enter these premises with confidence, you scofflaw, non-law-abiding person, because all the law-abiding people have now left their weapons outside. So, I am opposed to posting a sign. I think it achieves the absolute wrong effect of what is the desirability, and we would be absolutely in compliance with Act 35 by not posting a sign, because the specified areas, as you correctly pointed out, Chief, which is the portion of the building that which is the police department, or the portion of the building that is used in municipal court when it's in session, are specifically addressed in Act 35.
Right. And also, in the League of Municipalities, Claire Silverman, legal counsel with the League, there was an article about entitled, you know, "The Important Change Made by Wisconsin Concealed Carry." By posting a sign, we could in fact incur liability if something happens in the building. If we do not post the sign, and so, you know, then the liability is taken care of in Wisconsin 35. So, I mean, and every one of us here has taken, you know, an oath to uphold the Constitution, and I got lots of stuff if we want to discuss this, but I mean, I honestly believe that we don't need to post any signs, and we can go according to Wisconsin 35.
In effect, what I'm hearing you say is, we do not need to take any action, because we simply will be in compliance with Act 35. Is that correct? Or do we need an ordinance?
You don't need an ordinance, it's a policy decision of each local government, whether or not they want to put up a sign or not, whether or not they want to prohibit concealed weapons or not. That's a policy decision for this board to make.
I find it, I'm sorry, you guys already know how I feel, because I'm the one that's going to be working here, and we do collect taxes, and we, I just kind of don't understand why there's the exception for the police department or the court. And I realize what they do, maybe the clientele that they may be dealing with, but they're still coming in and out of the building when the rest of the employees are here. I find that the state statute, by excluding certain parts of the building, I just find that somewhat disturbing.
The bad guys aren't going to listen to the law.
You should have the fear of the bad guys.
I don't think that we can say how any individual would act under a certain given situation, whether it's a loss of a home, a job, things start mounting, and all it takes is one more thing. I don't think that anybody can predict, that not everyone is born a criminal. I don't think that, I think that it is something that sometimes happens out of the situation that they've been in, but...
So, all law-abiding citizens could snap and go off at any particular time?
I didn't say all.
You can't predict that.
That's right, you can't either, and none of us can. That's what I'm saying. We don't know that it's always going to be a criminal that's going to snap.
I don't know, I believe we should have the whole building with guns are banned, not just certain areas of it.
I did hear on the way to work, there were several places across the state that had announced that they would be banning guns from their buildings.
Wisconsin Department of Administration Secretary Mike Hubisch said on Friday that "Few exceptions, concealed weapons will be allowed in most state facilities, including the Capitol. Security at the Capitol is particularly a dicey issue, since some people are still angry and resentful over collective bargaining changes made this spring that brought on thousands of protesters in Madison. State law ensures that citizens with licenses are able to carry concealed, and that law extends to state facilities," Hubisch said in the statement. "Wisconsin is the 49th state to put concealed carry laws into place. Individuals with licenses are law-abiding citizens, and we must respect their right and to keep and bear arms under the U.S. and Wisconsin constitutions. Every one of us in this, on this board took an oath of office to protect and defend the Constitution of the Wisconsin Constitution and the U.S. Constitution."
So, you're saying that by passing, by posting a sign, we're breaking the law?
No, I did not say that. Posting the sign could incur liabilities to, you know, that the village would be responsible for not posting the sign, there is no, there is no loss of, or the liability is not there. We can lock those doors, I believe that's bulletproof glass there, if that's what we've got to do to adjust, so that you people, you know, are safe in your offices, we can do that.
I would think that that would be some steps, if that would be the next request that I would be bringing forward, if the posting of the sign doesn't happen.
The office that does house the administrator, clerk, and the deputy treasurer is lockable. And I would suggest that if you would feel safer, you can keep that door closed, except for people who have a key, or anyone that you would want to let in.
Are you required to acknowledge, if asked, if you're carrying a concealed weapon?
If asked, by whom?
One of the staff members?
I don't think so, no. I think there are certain regulations that, with respect to police, if police ask, but I don't think if just an ordinary citizen asks somebody, they have any duty to respond.
No, and I mean, it's a concealed weapon, and so basically, it stays concealed until such time that you would need to use it to protect your life, you know, and those types of things.
Hey, I'm just talking about a policy here that would be more effective, perhaps, than the signage. I tend to agree that, while the sign is there, you know as well as I do, things get ignored. But if, for the security of the staff, if there's a possibility where if they believe that there's going to be a greater chance of having armed people down here, if part of the policy is if they are allowed to ask, are you carrying a concealed weapon?
I'd say you're allowed to ask.
Sure, but I don't think there's any, there's nothing in the statute that demands a person to reply.
And a person that would ignore the sign, why would they answer honestly?
Well, I know, but all I'm suggesting is, how the sense of security is achieved here, if the staff has a concern with it, and without, I'm only making this suggestion in an attempt if makes, if the staff feels more secure. Because if you get a no, or if that means, what are you going to pat down people before they come in here? I don't, I'm not sure if we're looking at that many more people carrying weapons legally.
And I think from what I understand...
Just to clarify that, you know, in order to be able to carry a concealed weapon, you do have to apply for and get a permit, so I don't know how many people will be doing that.
Right.
Aside from Stan, we know Stan's doing it.
I think the, I think the, and Stan, correct me if you're right, or if I'm wrong, but I think that right now the projection is 4 percent, they're expecting about 4 percent of Wisconsin residents.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty negligible, I mean, you know, that's, they're not expecting a big amount of people. I mean, the liability, I mean, there isn't anyone that concealed carries, and I've been, you know, I've had permits in two states for over two years and carry, you know, just about daily when I'm at work in Minnesota, or in Minnesota. But the, everybody that carries a weapon prays that they never have to use that weapon, because we'll be the bad guys, you know, I mean, there's, you know, the Minneapolis shooting that was just recently happened, I mean, there's a lot of different things, but I mean, we've got, there's tons of documentation and fact of the places where the biggest shootings have happened, Columbine, Virginia Tech, Fort Hood, Luby's down in Texas, those are gun-free zones. And there was multiple, you know, 20-plus in most instances were killed in those places, and that many that were also wounded. I mean, the, it was earlier made the comment, is that when you've got, you know, when there's a sign out there that says there, you know, there's no weapons here, the bad guys love that, I mean, they pick them, that's what they, they thrive for that, because they know there isn't going to be somebody there that could stop them. I mean, concealed weapons, you're not going to know that people even have a weapon on them.
Would there be any reason or advantage to posting a sign that says, "Wisconsin Act 35 is enforced within the village hall"? No reason at all.
I mean, it wouldn't be unlike posting that all Wisconsin statutes are enforced within the village hall.
I just thought with the newness of this, at least it would bring awareness, but I was just looking at that. You know, and then I guess I would say, like you, Dan, you know, initially I was thinking that posting a sign indicating that handguns are banned from the village would be the proper way to go, unless we do have some way to enforce it, which we don't. I have to then shift my way of thinking to agree with Darrell, that, you know, you're only going to be asking the law-abiding people to check their guns and lock them in the car. But that's all I've got on this.
And I guess just to clarify, Jim, you referenced that we wouldn't be able to enforce it. If there were a sign posted, we could enforce trespassing laws, so it's, the sign's not unenforceable. And just wanted to clarify, I think you said we wouldn't be able to enforce it.
Have the legal right to enforce it, if we had somebody to do that.
I'm not sure that we're talking on the same line. Basically, if, I think Stan was talking about liabilities, not the legalities, the liabilities do come into play differently, and I haven't read that full opinion by the League of Municipalities, but I know that there was some discussion out there about those different liabilities.
Let me clarify that a little bit. That's not the League's opinion. That was a piece where the League was explaining a legal argument that's ongoing right now in certain circles, about there is something in the law that says if you don't post the sign, you're granted a certain immunity. That's what the law says. So, from that, some people are saying, well, if I do post the sign, do I lose immunity? You know, there's sort of this speculation about what happens if I do post the sign with respect to that. But the answer to that is not clear at all, you know, and the likelihood is that it really doesn't change the immunity at all. That would be my opinion on that, that whether you post the sign or not, you know, if, for us to get sued because somebody came in here and shot somebody because there was a sign there, that's just, that's a pretty far stretch, as I try to think through how that argument might work, that we could actually... might work, that we could actually, the village could actually be liable for posting such a sign. So anyway, I, just to clarify, that is an argument that's out there for sure, as Stan said, but, but it's not, it's not the League's opinion. They were just expressing the, they were explaining what the two sides of the argument are.
All right, but if, if, if I have to disarm to come into the building and I, and somebody, you know, a bad guy comes in and I get shot, I'm going to sue this place for every damn dime that you could possibly come up with. And that's what anybody will do.
And, and one argument says that, that, that may work and the other argument says that that's a, that's really a stretch, that the village is negligent because some totally, total third party shot you and you can argue that they did that because you weren't allowed to carry a gun, because the village posted a sign like that. That's just a, that's a hard legal argument to win.
Well, there's, there's, there's stuff out there. I mean, precedents in other states.
You are, you are absolutely right that there, there's stuff out there and it's an argument that's ongoing right now and there's no, there's no answer to it. So it's just, these are legal opinions that are floating around. My only real point there was that that's not the League's opinion.
Right, no, it was just an article that was in the League. No, I, I didn't state that quite properly, but there-
Just to clarify what Mark had said.
Right.
George, would it be safe to assume that we should probably address this at another finance meeting? I, I think the largest issue is the security issue for the staff and perception thereof. And right now debating the gun issue is not helping us get to where we're going with this.
Complete agreement. Darrell?
I was simply going to say this has been good discussion. I don't see an action item here. I suggest we move on.
Does anyone else have a question that they would like or a comment they'd like to make though, before we do move on? We've got the chief up here.
I, I would say we should put this to public safety as well. Just get, let's, everybody talk about it. It's, we have concerns with our staff. We should take care of them concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Truly a hot topic. Business from the board and the staff. Start off with the president's comments. In front of you, you have a copy of the St. Croix EMS and Rescue Quarterly Report, and this is for the months June through August. As you look this over, and I hope that you will take a look at it, Gloria did send out a link to the color version, which is, makes it a whole lot easier to read. I am the representative for the village on the EMS commission and I can tell you that we have a lot to be proud of in this organization, with this organization. Please read over those numbers and you'll see that it's a, in fact, a very busy rescue service. The only other item I have here, I'm going to turn this over to Stan. I'm going to use a couple of minutes here, five minutes to give to Stan to talk about the, as you probably know, if you don't, find out now. Next June, we, the village will celebrate its one hundredth anniversary. And to that end, Stan's wife, Mary, is working on a, on a book. It's a combination cookbook and a little bit of a history book. And unless she's changed since the last time I talked to her, it will be, I think, I'm excited about it. It's going to be what was life like in the year that this village became incorporated? So Mary, in the October twentieth edition, a lead article in section C, recipes needed for cookbook. And although it says on here that they were due on Monday, Stan has something he'd like to say regarding this. So Stan, the floor is yours.
Okay. My wife has done an outstanding job of putting this together since George assigned it to me when I was first elected to the board a couple of years ago. There was no discussion. It's like, all right, I mean, so, but, you know, after trying to, we've gone through a couple of different committees, I guess they would be, that people that were supposedly interested but chose the, that, you know, this is a little too much work. But, so what we've done, rather than go with it like a history pamphlet or whatever, we've gone to, we found a deal where it's a cookbook and I don't know where the TV cameras are and stuff, but we found there's, there's a group that does cookbooks. Well, like, they got me there. I'm on the TV. So, but there, there's a cookbook and it's, it's a, it's a nice three ring binder so you can add, subtract, do whatever. But it hasn't been only my wife. Right now we have, thirty-seven contributors have submitted a hundred and sixty-three recipes. A few of these contributors also submitted pictures and stories and they will be used for the dividers. As you can see with the different dividers and stuff we have, there's opportunities to put pictures and stuff from the village. We've got some neat train pictures, the old Hudson Hotel. I'm still working on one of the, that used to be Sam's Starlight. We would like to have a picture on each of the dividers that shows some different faction of the history of the village as, as we go through. So, you know, you can see it's a nice little deal. It's not going to be that expensive. The cookbooks will be not available until, for distribution till March or early April because we're trying to save as much money as we can by meeting certain deadlines and getting these things published since we didn't have a budget to work for. We are going to put out gift certificates that people could purchase, pre-purchase and to give us like a Christmas present. And, you know, we're working with the Pepper Festival to get them involved with it. And so it will be a whole community type, you know, event. And, you know, with the recipes from Pepper Fest, they're meeting this weekend. So we are going to allow recipes to come in until, I'm going to say Sunday. That would be, what is this? Fourth, fifth, sixth, the, the sixth. We will use the sixth as a deadline now so that everybody knows that that's the last possible chance for you to submit a recipe to the cookbook. And I would hope that everyone on the board would make an effort to get at least one recipe in. There's different, you know, appetizers. We've got this and that is one we're looking for. I mean, we're, you know, medicinal, old medicinal recipes or, you know, I mean, I know my hot brandy recipe for colds is going to be in there. I mean, we've had several people submit similar recipes to help with colds and flu and stuff like that. So no, it's, it's been fun. It was, there was not a lot of stuff that went on at first, but it is now taking off and we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you, Stan. Darrell?
I'd just like to know what kind of credibility is going into this project and so may I inquire of Mr. Wecken. Are you personally trying each recipe so that you can vouch for them?
Especially the cold remedies.
If you take a look at the size of me, I've, I've sampled quite a few of them, but as the amount that are coming in right now, I don't know if I'll be able to get them all in before we have to go to the publisher.
But you'll give it an honest try, right?
I'm going to give, I'll, you know, especially the ones that I think are particularly interesting, yes.
Good for you.
Well, Stan, I like that, but I just hope that you won't expect Mary to make all of these dishes for you.
Uh, we share cooking at our house and with, cooking and canning, as everyone knows, is a pretty much of a passion in our household. And no, we do, weekends is usually my cooking time. During the week when she has a little more time, she does the cooking.
Very good.
And we share.
Very good. I would encourage board members to think about that family recipe that you always have around Thanksgiving or Christmas and send it off to Mary.
Exactly.
I think it'd be great. We've already, we've already sent four into Mary and, and that, I, I like the names that my wife put on them. This is Aunt Betty's recipe and this is Grandma So-and-so's. And it, it really makes it personal. I think people enjoy that.
It's your chance to be published, your name and, you know, I mean, even deceased or whatever. I mean, you know, I mean, family, you know, my mom, you know, different people, their recipes are going to be in there and we're, you know, you know, it'll be, it'll be a fun book.
It will be. Thank you, Stan.
And those recipes can be dropped off here at the village hall if people choose to do that. Obviously, we're not here on Sunday, but there is a drop box out front. So if anybody's interested in dropping them off here. Stan, do you have the email address that they can be emailed to? I don't have it in front of me, but-
It's a-
If anybody's interested, they can contact the village hall and we can-
Yeah, it's a North Hudson Cookbook, you know, on, I'm, I'm not sure, or send it, yeah, to the village hall or, you know, ask Wecken at whatever the village hall, or I mean, the village one is, you can do whatever, but-
I, I have, just quoting from the Hudson Star Observer, a much easier way to do this.
That'd be good because-
And it says here, "Recipe submissions can be emailed or dropped off at Muds and Suds." Right, Mark?
I guess so.
Oh, yes.
I don't think she asked permission for that. I'm going to have to give her heck that she didn't put the address on there. I had the other one there.
Okay. Very good. Folks, we need a little levity here from time to time. And Stan, I want to thank you for helping us to that end. Item B on number six here is the administrator's comments. And Gloria, do you have anything for us?
I will save my comments for the annual budget.
Okay, thank you. And Becky, village clerk?
Just a reminder to everybody that the fall leaf collection is going to be on November seventh, which is next Monday. All items need to be in compostable bags and out at the curb by six thirty AM. This is going to be the last free collection that the village does, so take advantage of that. The last day for the yard cart service, if you're utilizing that service from Veolia, is November twenty-sixth. So that would be the last day to put your yard cart out for collection and that is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It gets pushed back to Saturday because of the, the change in pickup schedule. Or if we get significant snowfall before then, they will discontinue that service at that time that the weather doesn't permit that any longer. So that is all I have.
Thank you, Becky. Number seven, Plan Commission. I did talk to Mike, but I'm going to leave it to Dan. Anything from the Plan Commission?
I was not at the Plan Commission meeting.
Becky?
All right. You have the minutes in front of you. Basically, the Plan Commission considered a home occupation permit for a resident who was operating a personal training business out of their home. They did grant that permission to operate that business. And then the other item that was discussed was the ordinance that you have already considered at this time. So that is it.
I see that there was a restriction. They were going to try it for a year, is it?
Yes, the, the home occupation permit is, it was granted for one year with a six month review. So because of the concern with some additional traffic in the area and the potential for some noise, the Plan Commission has opted to ask them to come back in six month and invite, six months and invite the neighbors to come back as well. And if there are any concerns, they can address them at that time.
There, yeah, there was a, there's an interesting list of five, I guess you could call-
Conditions.
Conditions here. And one of them was maximum of five cars to be parked on the odd side of the street only. Now, and the hours were listed and that permit as you had described. Okay. Item number eight, Personnel and Finance. Finance Committee was busy from six to seven this evening. And we'll take a look, first of all, at the claims. Thank you, Darrell. Thank you, Mark. Is there any question regarding any of these bills that you see listed? I have a roll call vote. Start with Dan.
Yes.
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 We have a resolution amending the fee schedule for the, and if, if you take a look at this, you'll notice that the entire fee schedule is before you. And if you go to the second page, you'll see the only change. And this is what Patrick had discussed a little while ago. The Finance Committee did have a recommendation to keep it at twenty-five thousand per acre, per rated to fractional acres, even though if you look in the public or in the park section, you'll see that the Park Commission had recommended thirty-five. Finance is recommending twenty-five. So I'll entertain a motion. What do you think, Darrell? Should we do it the same way we did it during the-
Well, I really think we need to do it in two separate motions. I think we need to amend the fee schedule, which right now indicates thirty-five. And I'm prepared to do that. Mr. President, I, I move that we amend the fee schedule that is attached to the resolution by changing thirty-five thousand per acre in lieu of dedication to twenty-five thousand.
Second.
Thank you, guys. Any discussion on that before we go into the resolution itself? It says is instead of in. Yeah, it does. You got that, Becky?
Yep.
What you see, I'll go into the explanation of your motion so that it was clear. The Park Commission had recommended thirty-five. When this-
Plan Commission did.
Plan Commission did.
Plan Commission did. A recommendation was made for, for thirty-five. When the fee schedule is typed up, it was a, it was an error in typing. It was typed as twenty-five. So what you should see there is thirty-five. What Darrell is suggesting in his motion is the twenty-five that is actually written in the fee schedule. I'm sure that's clear, isn't it, Darrell?
I understand that.
Good. And we don't need to go any deeper into that. Is there any question or discussion regarding that amount?
I would like to know just the reasoning to go back to twenty-five. You know, we chose thirty-five because at twenty-five, that's what it was five years ago. If we were to do it in the next two or three years, that twenty-five thousand is not going to cover our costs.
And the question that I think Finance would have for you is, how did you arrive at the thirty-five as opposed to the twenty-five? What would you do with the twenty-five that you, or what, what would you have done with the thirty-five that you now can't do because you only have twenty-five?
That was fuel costs. Everything's went up. Nothing's going down. And we were just trying to cover the bases.
Patrick might be able to shed a little light on that question because they did do a lot of discussion about-
He already said that twenty-five were on the high side.
What it would cost. But he also, they did talk a lot about what it would actually cost to build a park, to do this, to do that, things like that. Do you remember some of that discussion?
Well, when, when we looked at the twenty-five thousand dollar fee, when we looked at the twenty-five thousand dollar fee, we compared it to other communities. And the, the community with the nearest fees, which this equates into a thousand dollars per dwelling unit per requirement, was the village of Somerset. And theirs is seven hundred and fifty dollars per dwelling unit. And I, my recollection is what we did was, we looked at their two most recently developed parks that they paid for to develop. And the, and with the amount of lots that were, or dwelling units that were in the subdivision, I think the parks came to about thirty-five thousand dollars to develop a, one park. And that was four, five years ago.
And that's based on what's in the park? Any standard that's measurable? You know, how many swing sets? What do they mean by developed?
Right. I would say each park is probably developed differently, but it's, it's equipment, it's paved trail or sidewalk going into it.
So in other words, there isn't a definite design for each park or a park. It's a matter of what's desired at the time.
Correct.
You can afford.
Correct. And it just happened to be the last-
When it comes to establishing a cost, if you have twenty-five thousand to work with, that's what you work with. In other words, these are still arbitrary numbers, so to speak. You're using an example from an existing community.
Correct.
Okay.
How many dwelling units were served by the park that you're referencing?
Um, I may have that in my old notes.
If it cost them thirty-five thousand, they collected seven hundred and fifty dollars per dwelling unit. My point is that it was covered. And ours right now is about a thousand.
And ours right now is about 1,000.
Yeah. I mean, you could do the math. I don't, I don't know exactly.
If we're 20, when I, where I'm reluctant to go to that 35, as I said earlier, I was at the meeting, and there, there is no conclusive reason to go to 35. Not based on any costs, and given the fact that each park is different, depends what goes into it. You just look around North Hudson, you know, there's nothing in most of them. I'm not sure, sure we can substantiate it going to $35,000. There doesn't even seem to be empirical evidence going in that direction, other than the notion costs might go up.
Right. Yeah, there are, there are no cost estimates for proposed improvements in the park plan.
And it's even a more mysterious notion when we're not even applying it to a set, set of criteria.
Well, to me, it seems, I mean, 25,000, I think, would be reasonable since there's not that much land to build a park. If we do have more development, that, that money can go into the existing parks. And, you know, I know the budget, the Park Board doesn't have a lot of money coming into it, but it seems like 25,000 probably would be reasonable for what we can do.
Let me play out a scenario. I find, let's suppose that I find some acreage here in the village, maybe two acres. And I decide that I want to buy that piece of property. I want to put a very nice home on that. Am I now, according to this, am I required to come up with some additional money for this parkland?
If you're, are you creating a new lot, or are you buying an existing lot?
I'm having a problem with that question. I mean, there's a chunk of land there that I'm going to buy.
Sure.
It's two acres. Somebody is selling me two acres of land. And I put a, I want to put a really nice house on it. According to this, am I required to come up with?
I don't think that you're actually creating a development.
Yeah, it's, it's when you're creating additional lots to put homes on, then it would be prorated.
All right.
And we'd have to annex the ground, I think, in order to get any kind of thing like that done in North Hudson.
So let's, for example, let's say somebody owned four acres and then decided to make six lots out of it.
Okay.
Then, then the fee would come into play.
Okay. Well, we do have some of that land, don't we, Mark?
Well, I, I think the notion is clear that we're not interested in acquiring more park land. So the, the, a fee in lieu of land is not debated. We're just talking about the 25,000 versus 35,000. And at Finance, it was fairly clear that we were steadfast at 25,000. That's the question. And I haven't heard an argument that would contradict anything to change that. So I, I beg the question. We go with the, do we have a motion?
The reason that I, I looked to you is because your family does own, was it four acres?
Well, yeah, that's, that's
No, that's
The consideration, but I mean, it's not, it's not
Four acres.
No, I know there's, there's land around, but there's no desire to annex at the time.
It's just, I haven't heard a reason to go to the 35.
I think we can vote on the motion.
I think so. Okay. This isn't spending.
No.
Okay, let's do a voice
No, it just is a reminder, too, this is part of the fee schedule. That doesn't require an ordinance change, and it's gonna be looked at each year.
Right.
So until something happens, it's, this is not set in stone. So
This is good.
You know, debating it at length now is
Could be changed in three months.
It could be changed in, in one month.
Well, okay, one month. All favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, now we're ready for the resolution.
Now I move approval of Resolution Number 2011-16, which is the resolution amending the fee schedule for the Village of North Hudson.
Second.
I'm sorry, Stan beat you to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
No, I didn't.
Oh, was it Jim?
That was Jill.
It's a resolution. We'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Stan.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Is there any discussion on this?
That's what we've been, oh, the resolution. Let's back up. I'm sorry. Would you like to discuss?
I just wondered why we had snowmobile renters insurance when we don't have snowmobiles allowed in the village limits.
I think that question comes up every time we pass this fee schedule. I believe that at one point we did. And do we want to have to recreate that wheel if we ever do again?
I've been here for 14 years, and there hasn't been a snowmobile allowed on the grounds. I just don't understand why.
I've asked, I've been here 34 years. I've asked the same question, so.
I mean, I'm happy with whatever you want to go there, but it just seemed rather stupid to me.
Okay. Did you vote in favor of the resolution?
Yes.
All right. The next one we have is pretty straightforward. It's a resolution, 2011-16, amending designation of public depositories. If you look at the sheet, you'll see right down the bottom of the left column, you'll see Riverbank is crossed off, Central Bank is put in its place. And that is because of the transition from Riverbank to Central Bank. So this is
George, I move to approve Resolution Number 2011-16, Resolutions Designating Depositories for the Village of North Hudson, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Any question, any discussion? Sorry, Dan, I really forgot to ask that before. Any discussion on that? All right. We'll start with you, Dan, on a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Go ahead, Mark. Yeah, the next one is employee policy regarding concealed carry.
Just to piggyback, I guess, what the other issue related to conceal and carry. Again, I was asked to bring forward some information related to restrictions that can be placed under state statute. Under the 2001 Wisconsin Act 35, there are restrictions that can be placed on employees of the village while they're conducting their duties as employees of the village, restricting them from carrying a concealed weapon during those duties. And I guess the caveat, if you read that first excerpt, is if they're outside of, or if they're not in their personal vehicle. So for example, would be any of the staff members outside of the police department that were working at their desk here at the Village Hall. In lieu of the fact that there may not be a restriction on the Village Hall, they would then be able to carry their concealed weapon and be sitting at their desk with their concealed weapon if there is no policy in place restricting them from such action. Or the other example for the village would be a Public Works employee who was out driving around in a Public Works truck during their time under their employment during their hours of duty would be allowed to carry a concealed weapon as the state law currently reads, unless the village enacts a policy that, that says they cannot carry a concealed weapon as a permitted holder, again, not, not just as a permitted holder, would not be allowed to carry their concealed weapon while working for the village in a village truck. Was just asked to bring this information forward as the statute reads, excuse me, as the act reads, and then also some examples of other human resources departments in many municipalities from throughout Wisconsin that have enacted the language as I presented it on the sheet in front of you.
There was no recommendation or action item forwarded from Finance, so I don't know what we've got to discuss at this point.
You, I couldn't have said it any better. I was actually gonna say the very thing that Darrell just said, that the Finance Committee did not recommend any action. And we thank the chief for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
That does not mean that it can't be discussed by any of the board members, or anyone else for that matter. Resolution Number 2011-17 is simply a resolution to, regarding GASP, G-A-S-B, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. Gloria, would you like to?
Sure. Just quickly, it is something that has to be passed. We will be changing our, we, we don't have to actually change our internal, but when the external financials are prepared, they will have to comply with these new, this new terminology. And there's actually five new verbiages. And there are a couple of funds that we have currently that will not be allowed to be as funds. I think it's this police special purchases and the crime prevention will no longer be allowed to be separate funds. They will need to, if there's, if they, the board chooses to restrict them or commit them, it would need to be under the general, general government or the 101 fund. With that being said, it's going to require a lot of work, but other than that, it's something that I think is a good thing so that it will help our financials, someone reading our financial could read one in Texas, and they would read the same. It would help for being able to understand or
Consistency.
Yeah.
This is a case where we get lumped in with the same broad brush with some units of local government that have spent down their reserve funds and account balances. And so we get lumped in and have to comply with GASP 54. Having said that, we went through this very same thing this morning at the county. We do have to be in compliance, so, I mean, we can argue about it all day, but we have to do it. So, Mr. President, I move approval of Resolution Number 2011-17.
Second.
Which is the resolution to comply with GASP 54.
Any further, any questions or discussion regarding this topic? This is a resolution, so we will do have a, we will have a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Dan.
Yes.
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 Aye. The final item under Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations is the proposed 2012 annual village budget. And Gloria is here to discuss that. Is this the piece where we approve what's gonna go to the paper?
Correct. You'll see a document in front of you that's labeled Village of North Hudson Notice of Public Hearing Regarding the 2012 Budget. It's also, we're asking that there be a special board meeting held on November 29th at 5:00 p.m. here at the Village Hall in order to pass this budget, and it will be considered a public hearing. And this document will be posted in the newspaper 15 days, at least 15 days prior to that public hearing. There will, there is available detailed budget document that if the residents would like to come in and ask questions, additionally, any board members that have questions on it. George, would you like to cover the mill, the village mill rate, the tax levy? Any board members having any questions other than those items?
What I will do is simply read what you have posed here, and it says the total general fund expenditure and expenditures and uses is actually down 0.90% from last year. And the village tax levy will increase 1.60%. The mill rate will increase 1.3%. Is it, I'm sure that's accurate, Gloria. Is there anything else that needs to be said regarding that? I'll throw it out to the board if you have any questions. All we're asking tonight for is a motion to be able, for Gloria to provide this to the Hudson Star Observer.
Mr. President, I move approval of the authorization to proceed to publishing of the proposed 2012 village budget prior to a public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I, I see notes, stuff, I, you know, did most of the plan, or the tag, or the budget talks have been during the day. And unfortunately, I still have to, you know, go pay my other job, you know, so I haven't been able to attend. But there's been, I know there was several options, you know, there's an option one, two, three, or four, whatever it is. Is there any chance that we can get a look at any of those? I mean, other board members? I mean, I've never seen anything like that, and so I'm curious as to what the other options are.
Certainly. The, the, just to let you know that the four options related to the tax levy itself, whether we would keep it what it was last year, reduce it, keep it what it was last year, increase it by the amount that was selected here, or there was a fourth option, which would have been a larger amount. And the Finance recommended that we select the third option, which would allow us to keep the current staffing level, to be in a better position next year due to the fact that we will never have or with the two-year budget constraints, we would not be able to increase the budget next year only by the percentage of the net new construction. So if you would like to come in, I would be happy to give that to you.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Okay. Colleen or Dan? If there's any questions, you can stop in. I've got all the detail and any questions you have at all, I'd be happy to go through it with anyone.
I will say that even though four out of the seven of us actually sat in on those final meetings, it was a collaborative effort by all members of the board who, who helped develop these numbers in their committees. So Public Works, Public Safety, various committees are, their, their fingers were in this pot very, very heavily. And entertain, we have the motion. Any other discussion? I'll just go for a voice vote on this. All in favor of the proposed 2012 annual budget presented to you going to the paper indicate by saying aye? Pose same signs. Public Works. We have a couple items here that I know we want to discuss. Floor is yours?
First of all, under Chair Update, the only thing that I would mention is that the Public Works Committee did review very briefly the Vision Triangle Ordinance. We will be discussing it again at the next Public Works meeting. I'm not suggesting we're going to be making any changes in it, but it was suggested we review it, and we are doing that. If anyone has any comments, either other board members or members of the public on the Vision Triangle Ordinance, we would be interested in knowing that. We do have two action items that come out of Public Works that we are recommending for the full board. First of all, we did have a request for a second driveway opening at a property located at 719 Monroe Street. In brief summary, the garage that is on that property previously had the entrance to the garage facing east. The doors on that property now with the newly constructed house and the refurbished and re-sited and attractive looking garage now faces the street, and the distance from the curb to the garage door is only 16 feet, which makes it very difficult to park a normal-sized vehicle on that driveway. So the request was to leave the existing curb cut also available on that property so that there can be a circular parking area to get a vehicle completely off the street. The other extenuating circumstance is that parking is not permitted on that street because of closeness to the school. So all of that seemed reasonable, and the recommendation out of Public Works is that that be granted. The applicant did submit the required paperwork and pay the fee for the second opening. And so, Mr. President, I will move to recommend approval by the Village Board of the request for a second driveway opening at 719 Monroe Street.
Second.
Now, what I find interesting about the motion that's now on the table is we are approving or not approving something that has already been completed.
Well, no, we could We could require that the, that the existing curb cut be taken out and filled in if we don't approve it.
Oh, really?
They did, they did pay the required curb cut...
Right.
...for the garage. Now, that's going to be there. They're requesting that the previous one that's there also remain.
Okay. All right. It looks very nice. But, Stan?
We have an interested party. I mean, Richard, it's his son that has the property, so, I mean...
Yeah, we, we spoke about this in Public Works. The gentleman was there. Makes sense. We're recommending approval.
Okay.
Aye.
All favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. There we go. You don't have to dig it up.
Looks very nice. It does.
Yeah.
Can't wait. The second item that is an action item, Mr. President, is the completion of the two thousand and eleven Pacer map updates. This work product primarily will be done by village staff, Mark Ekblad. He will gather the data, and that will be then submitted to Cedar Corporation. Cedar Corporation will update the information on the required map, submit it to, to the state. And so our recommendation from Public Works is that the village board approve the Pacer rating project with Cedar Corporation at a cost not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's probably supposed to be filed out of the app.
Any questions? This is a spending amount, so we'll do a roll call vote. Start with Stan.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Public Safety. I don't see any Bs here.
Public Safety did not meet. I have nothing to report. Mark, anything else?
Thanks, Jim. Okay. Public Welfare.
We did meet. Item B is, we, Public Welfare had made a recommendation regarding the alleged nuisance at seven twelve Pine Street North and beginning, instructing the attorney to begin the inspection Discussed it at Finance with some new information, and we've got a new recommendation before the board to begin the inspection process. And instead of a thousand dollars as recommended, increase that money spent for legal fees to go to two thousand dollars to initiate possible further action without delay in, in meetings to get more funds. And...
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I just did.
Okay.
Second.
I'm almost afraid to ask. Is there any discussion regarding this motion? Is it clear to everyone what this entails? Do you feel necessary to say anymore?
I think less, I think everybody's pretty aware, and I think...
Get her done.
Get her done. This is a spending item, so we will have a roll call vote. Dan, you want to start us off?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Park Board.
I'll be quick. We did remove some more buckthorn from Webster Park with North Hudson Elementary and a few others helping. And also, they will be planting some native trees with the help of Starla and Willa River Tree Farm, using up the remaining money from the DNR grant. Also, just, it's a long ways away, but there will be no lifeguards at Browns Beach next summer due to budget constraints and liability issues. And signs will be, you know, posted at that time, but just a heads up. And then also, one other thing we're working on is the possibility of a ice rink down at Summers Landing Park. We're just looking in to see if that would be workable for this winter as well, since there was a request from a resident near there to see if we could do something just for the winter and see how that works.
Democracy.
And that's it.
The, there was a check in there for that, and that, is that what that, is that what that fee was? Is that coming out of a DNR grant for that, those trees?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Leftover that has to be spent this year.
I only see the checks I have to sign. I don't see the money coming in. I don't see the DNR part, so, thank you.
This is willing to keep your hands off that anyway.
Well, I understand, but I'd like to know what more. Never mind. Mr. Zapp, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.